No, he's telling you, you need to retire.
Already?
Already.
Not yet, not yet.
You're gonna make the varsity team and that's gonna be it, and you need to retire.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Evanston Township High School Board of Education Meeting, June tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can we have a roll call, please?
Here.
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 Here, thank you. Okay, the first item on the agenda is written communication. Dr. Beavis, do we have any?
We have no written communication this evening.
Okay, great. Okay, the next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Dr. Beavis, do we have comments from the public?
We have no comments from the public this evening.
Oh my, okay. All right, so we're at items for information, and the first item is recognition of boys gymnastics team. They were state runner-ups.
All right, Mr. Levantino is gonna come to the mic and introduce the team and show us all the good news.
My favorite way to start a meeting.
Awesome, well, thank you for having us. This past spring, two of our sports teams did something that's never been done before in school history. Each of them won, finished second place at state for both girls water polo and boys gymnastics. And while we're looking for a date to celebrate girls water polo still, we are here tonight to recognize our boys gymnastics team. Boys gymnastics has won a state trophy seven times in school history, but that was back in the sixties and seventies, and they've never finished state runner-up until this season. Four different gymnasts earned ten individual state medals, including the state championship on the vault by Eric Van Leer. It had been fifty years since our boys even qualified as a team for the state meet, and fifty-two years since they won the sectional championship, which they also won this year. This team also won its third straight Central Suburban League Conference Championship. Please join me in congratulating head coach Frank Irwin, who was selected Coach of the Year for Illinois, and the ETHS Boys Gymnastics Team.
Senior Mo Frisher, junior Eric Van Leer, Harper Papa Christos, and Nathan Schlaack. All members of the team. Several are missing because summer started, and our coaches, Mike Spivak, Raul Rodriguez. Great coaches.
All right, students, we're gonna have you to come around. Coach, are you making some comments? Are you making comments?
Yes, I want to thank the board and the district for the support you give athletics. This is an outstanding school for athletics in general. Nine years ago, when I came in, gymnastics was actually at the bottom of the heap, just in the school and at state. I competed at a team in the seventies when Evanston was a powerhouse. I was at a school that won state, and Evanston took third my senior year. I knew guys on that team, and a couple days after the state meet, I got an unsolicited call from the coach of that team, Jerry Fontana, congratulating me on bringing the team back up. His only regret was that it happened from some kid who was at Hinsdale we competed against, but it was great, great to hear that, so thank you for your support.
Well, students, we're gonna have, the board's gonna shake your hands, and we're gonna have you to come around and square here, and we have a little gift for you. Congratulations.
That is a great way to start a meeting. Can we start every meeting that way? All right, so now that we're going here, the next item is communications and engagement strategy report.
So we're gonna have our new communications director, Rain Hannah, and her team to come and share their report. As you all know, that just a meeting or two ago, the board approved Rain as our new Director of Communications and Engagement, and so this is an opportunity for Rain to introduce herself and her work to the district and the board, and probably in September, you all will hear again from the administration on how you will be engaging with the district and the community. I know that that's been the goal of this board, to have more community engagement, and so Rain and I will be drafting a plan for the board to engage. But prior to that, we'll give an overall view of our communications and engagement strategy, which is particularly the district goal four, and so Rain is gonna introduce her team tonight, and you can take it away, Rain.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Good evening, everyone, members of the board and the administration. I'm really excited to be here tonight alongside my colleagues to outline our new communication strategy for the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I'm really honored to be serving the ETHS community in this new capacity, and I'm so fortunate to have joined such an incredible and dedicated team within the communications office, including Assistant Director Michael Jacobson, who brings so much knowledge and experience to our work every single day, Alexia Herrera, who is our family and community engagement coordinator, and has truly been so innovative and driven in her role, and I can't wait for you to hear more about what she's been working on. And then, although she's not here this evening, Sabrina Stark, who is a communications specialist in our office and is in so many different ways the backbone of our office, and has been such an important and constructive voice for accessible communications. I'm so bad at clicking, so hopefully I'll remember to do this. So our team is working to amplify the work and mission of District two oh two in a manner that is effective, innovative, equitable, and responsive to the needs of our community. We are really grateful to have Dr. Campbell's leadership as we look to reimagine what communications can look like here at ETHS, and he has really set a high bar and has challenged us to be innovative and forward-thinking in how we engage with our community. So the strategy that we will outline here this evening is really grounded in ETHS identity and vision. Our new approach aims to really increase the visibility of our mission and impact, build trust with our community, and foster a more connected and informed school community. So the way that we see it, ETHS is guided by a set of core principles that really shape our identity and drive our actions. And we, when we think about the characteristics that define us, you'll see on the screen what we've come up with. So equity and excellence, innovative and forward-thinking, social justice, student-centered, and rooted in community. These are the values that shape us and form the foundation of our school community, and we believe they should inform every aspect of our communication strategy. So this communication strategy has been developed with the aim of strengthening our digital media presence, enhancing authentic family engagement, ensuring equitable communication, increasing transparency and building trust, strengthening brand management, and moving our work as the communications office into greater alignment with district's strategic priorities. I'd like to emphasize just a couple of points here. So we really view it as essential for our office to support the district's four strategic priorities: equity, literacy, post-secondary planning, and social-emotional learning. This can include targeted campaigns, which we'll get into later, but also ensuring that things like our website, right, reflect these priorities. So for example, information and resources related to post-secondary planning should, as one of our priorities, be more visible and accessible on our website. It's also essential for district information to be distributed equitably to ensure that policies, programs, initiatives, and other important info are accessible to all students and families, ultimately advancing a more just and inclusive school community. And so we recognize that there is no one-size-fits-all approach when it comes to communication in this community, and we are fully committed to learning and evolving in order to meet the diverse needs of our community. Really quickly, just to look at our stakeholders, we are really committed to promoting transparency and building trust with all of our stakeholders. You can view our key stakeholders on the screen, but I'd like to emphasize that our office really views students and families as our primary audience, ensuring that their voices are heard and that their needs are prioritized. Our efforts are really centered around creating engaging and relevant content that supports their educational journeys and sustains a strong sense of connection and community. With that said, I'd like to turn it over to Mike, who will share some exciting new developments with regard to our digital media strategy.
Good evening, everyone, and once again, thank you for inviting us here tonight. My name is Mike Jacobson, again, the Assistant Director of Communications here at ETHS. So what I'm gonna talk about today is some of our digital media strategy, and it starts with our website redesign. So it's one of our bigger projects for the two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five school year, is the redesign of the website. It was last updated in two thousand and fifteen, so the ten-year anniversary is coming up, but that's one anniversary we do not want to celebrate. So we're looking forward to the update. So we're working with the company Final Site to develop a new website with the anticipated launch in early two thousand and twenty-five. So we want the new site to be user-friendly and easy to navigate so that our visitors can find the information that they see quicker. It'll also be filled with pictures and videos that touch on the brand and the overall feel for the school. And the accessibility of this new site is also very important as we will be using inclusive practices, including alt text and color contrast, to help ensure that there are no barriers that prevent people from interacting with the website. So besides that, we also have something we're very excited about that we're going to be launching this upcoming school year, and that is Wildkit Weekly. So the communications office this fall will be unveiling this weekly newsletter. We'll be sharing exciting, relevant, and important information, including news about what is happening in and around the halls and classrooms of this campus, as well as upcoming events and district initiatives. And like our new website, Wildkit Weekly, will also have accessible practices, including the use of plain language. And so now I'm gonna kick it back over to you.
Sure, so you may have noticed, in recent months, we have been working to enhance our social media strategy by implementing a more dynamic content plan that includes a diverse range of engaging posts, event highlights, interactive elements, and student-driven content. We aim to ensure that our social media presence resonates with student interests and perspectives. These platforms provide an accessible and familiar space where students are already active. We know that kids are chronically online, which really makes social media an integral part of our strategy. And the one thing that I really love about social media is though, although we love uplifting stories about awards, honors, and recognition, the day-to-day happenings are just as important, and they're worth recognizing and appreciating, and social media gives us a platform to do that and celebrate the small moments. Additionally, we're focusing on increasing our responsiveness to inquiries and feedback on social media, ensuring that our platforms serve as valuable channels for communication and community building within our school community. This has really been an area of growth for our team as we work to strengthen the school's brand identity across social media platforms and really leverage social media as a tool to enhance engagement and accessibility of school communications. And I'm now gonna pass it all the way to Alexia, who will share more about our family and community engagement strategy.
Hi, thank you all for having me here. Again, I'm Alexia Herrera, Family and Community Engagement Coordinator, and I'm excited to share some of our new family and community engagement communication strategies. So some of the overarching goals for our strategies include conducting targeted outreach, leveraging existing partnerships, both internal and external, and making existing programs more equitable and accessible. So some of the ways that we will do this is by creating a parent-university program, which is a bridge between families, communities, and the district. So by doing this, we're gonna facilitate learning opportunities to empower families, and we're gonna build relationships with ETHS families, who are typically not in the building or not as engaged. We are facilitating resource connections and workshops that align with student programmings. For example, we're having a session of post-high-school prep workshop that happens in the same week as the career and college pathways fair, so that families and students can be aligned and aware of the same programs. We are also partnering with certain communities and creating collaborations with them. Another example would be Peer. They're gonna facilitate a workshop for us at Parent University in the same week that they're facilitating workshops and the health classes for students. That way, they're aware of their students' education in school and outside of school. And some of the ways that we are doing this is by conducting outreach and collaboration with existing parent groups and community partners. In addition to that, we are creating family guides to ETHS. So this is a centralized resource guide for students and families belonging to typically underserved communities. It's designed to support families in navigating ETHS by increasing their understandings of the schools, opportunities, resources, and more. So we'll use a multifaceted communication approach to do this by using visuals, audio, and written materials in multiple languages and in plain language. So to continue our family and community engagement, we want to uplift and leverage existing partnerships. Some of the internal partners that we are working with are school counselors, college counselors, our attendance office, E-Ban, A-L-A-C, I-Kit, Community Service Office, BIPOC, and some of our social workers. We're also leveraging our external communications and external partnerships, like the Northwestern Office, the Oakton College Office, Peer, and Fan. So we want our families to be aware of all of these resources and partners that we have, so they can use them on their own. And how we plan to increase our equitability and accessibility is through campus tours, for example, to get more families who are not typically in the building, in the building. So we wanna increase the number of Spanish-language tours. I think last year, we had about eleven families, eleven people come to our campus tours. With the targeted outreach that we did, we were able to get thirty people to come in. So that kind of caused us to add another Spanish tour, and we are also creating a more accessible tour, especially for people with disabilities.
Back to me. So now, talking about increasing access, and one of the things that you see here, especially we see Dr. Rosa up there, it's about, really about multilingual services. So the communications office will be expanding its multilingual resources as the district's documents, like as the district's documents and resources, like the pilot, will be made available in the most commonly spoken languages in our community, not only in English, not only in Spanish, but we're gonna break that out to other languages, including Haitian, Creole, French, and Arabic. And as mentioned previously, the communications office will be focused on improving accessibility in all the schools and the district's communications with students, families, and the Evanston-Skokie community. This means the website, Wildkit Weekly as well, and emails will have plain language, alt text, images, graphics, text-to-speech, and more. Again, we want to connect and meet people where they are at.
So as I touched on earlier, we are fully committed to supporting the district's strategic priorities. I'm gonna unpack that a little bit here. We are crafting our messaging to align closely with the district's strategic priorities, ensuring that our communication strategy reinforces our overarching goals and objectives as an institution. By consistently highlighting key initiatives, accomplishments, and upcoming initiatives, we aim to foster greater understanding, engagement, and support for our strategic direction among stakeholders within the district and the broader community. We also, as part of our proactive approach to addressing challenges within our school community, we are developing targeted campaigns to tackle issues that ETHS and schools, really across the nation, are grappling with. For example, our Attendance Matters campaign that's in development, or an anti-vaping campaign. Such campaigns will utilize creative content to raise awareness, provide support, and reinforce the implementation of existing and new initiatives aimed at supporting positive change. And by engaging stakeholders through these campaigns, we aim to collaboratively address these issues and support the administration's response. We are also looking to formally offer opportunities for students to get involved with various aspects of our work, such as photography or content creation through internships. These internships would be designed to support students' growth and create opportunities that support their post-secondary interests, providing hands-on experience in the field of communications. The details and framework for this initiative are in development, but we're really excited about it. We really have such incredibly talented students at ETHS who are eager to contribute their creative skills to our school and our mission. We did engage a handful of students in our work in recent months, including students like Phil Kamaya, who is pictured here with Dr. Campbell. Phil photographed a number of school events for us this year, and his work is just stunning, and we look forward to continuing to engage Phil and other students in our efforts. And then lastly, in this section, we do intend to issue an engaging annual report that highlights key events and progress made towards board goals. This report will serve as a comprehensive overview of the school's achievements, initiatives, and milestones, providing transparency and accountability to our stakeholders, but also uplifting all the work that we do. And when students, families, and community partners have clear insights into the district's vision and objectives, they develop a deeper understanding and connection to its mission and its intentions, and this transparency cultivates trust in district leadership and fosters a greater sense of alignment with our mission. I'm gonna pass it back to Mike here.
Thanks, Rain. Okay, so also, we're gonna be streamlining media relations. So my background comes in media, so I was a TV reporter at markets down south and around the East Coast. So this is something that's very important, something to my heart. One of the new processes of the upcoming school year is introduction of press passes for ETHS events. Having consistent and appropriate oversight and coordination will not only result in a smoother process, it'll also enhance relations with the media and support timely coverage of ETHS events and activities. And then on top of that, media training. The communications office will be facilitating media training for school administrators and staff. We want our admins and staff to be brand ambassadors for ETHS. So we'll be providing the tools and strategies needed to be effective during an interview to help ensure their message is strong, consistent, and on-brand with district priorities. Now, we all know that doing interviews is not the most fun thing for people to do, makes them nervous. You know, again, I was on the other side of the mic, so there's a lot of things that we can teach to help make sure that, you know, obviously, you're gonna be nervous, but I always say, okay, just take that big breath and let's go. So it's gonna be something that we're gonna be able to give strength to our admins and staff.
Thank you, Mike. And finally, as we roll out our new communication strategy, one of our key goals is to increase visibility of the Board of Education within the community and also promote a greater understanding of its mission. We plan to achieve this through various initiatives. I know Dr. Campbell mentioned that, you know, we'll be revisiting this in the fall. We did wanna share just a few of our plans this evening. So we want to reintroduce a condensed version or highlights of D-two-oh-two board meetings in the form of what we will call board briefs. We heard board bites is another suggestion from Dr. Beavis, but that is going to be produced, it was cute, I had to give you a shout-out. It'll be produced and distributed by the comms office, so we can talk more about what that will look like in the future. But our vision is really to provide key updates in a succinct and easily digestible format. Our goal through this initiative is to enhance transparency and accessibility of board information and just create a more informed and engaged community. We also plan to utilize our social media presence to share board information, meeting highlights, and important updates with our following. We also plan to implement an ongoing campaign that's designed to educate community members about the board's activities, decision-making processes, how to access and navigate board information, and how to participate in board meetings effectively. And lastly... And lastly, the Communications Office intends to help facilitate and support greater board engagement and participation in school events and activities across the district. These opportunities will enable board members to connect with students, parents, and staff in informal settings. So we're looking forward to that. And in closing, I just want to say thank you to the team. And I really want to emphasize that there's so much good that happens in this building every single day, from the classroom to the athletic fields, the hallways, the theater stage, and beyond. So many stories that, you know, we're really excited to be in a position to share and uplift. And that's really at the heart of what we want to do. We want to tell the story of ETHS. It's a historic one, and it's a special one. So thank you again for the opportunity to share more about our vision for our work moving forward. We welcome your questions and any feedback.
Thank you. Thank you. That's, it's very exciting and just on so many different levels. Really good to see. It's been 2015 since that. I'm sort of stuck there, like, wow. That's a long time ago.
Yeah, we're excited.
Board questions?
So first of all, I mean, I'm not usually a gusher, but I think this is fabulous. I'm really excited about it. And I think that, I wanted to say four things to mention or ask really quickly. I think the increasing the visibility of the Board of Education and everything you have in that section is so long in coming. And that's not to, you know, disparage that which has come before. But I think that this is something that, and also the idea of building transparency and trust. I mean, this is something that I think there's a real desire for in the community. And I think, you know, makes the school closer to having just a real true partnership with the community. So I'm super excited about that. And then my quick comments or questions were, the WildKit Weekly. I was just curious, is that something that would just be posted on the website that someone has to go to? Or is it something that will be emailed out? I was just curious.
Yes, so it's going to be something that's going to be emailed out. So we're going to kick it off in the fall. And then once we have also the website up, you know, which is again, is going to hopefully be in the, you know, beginning of 2025, then it's going to be linked to the website. So it's going to be a nice, easy way. It's going to be pulling stories, you know, from the website and populating. Because a lot of people obviously don't check the website every day for information. So it's just another way to generate, you know, interest in what's going on with ETHS, but that's the plan.
And if I can add to that, we also talked about wanting to use the WildKit Weekly as an opportunity to uplift stories that may not necessarily make a press release or may not be its own social media post, but is worthy of, you know, celebrating and recognizing. So we're excited to use that as a new channel to engage with the community.
I like that. So the last thing was just, so leveraging social media. I liked how you talk about that the primary focus is really engaging students, because students should be at the center of everything we do. I just wondered, given sometimes the, you know, controversies and things with social media, I noticed you mentioned Facebook, X, Instagram, LinkedIn. Thoughts on, and were they purposely left out or whatever, TikTok, Snapchat, YouTube?
I think TikTok has come up a lot. And as we engage students in our, in our work, I think we would lean on them. Admittedly, I'm not a TikTok expert yet, so we'd really love to. I think that's the same for the team here. But I think in general, like, our content has been more suited for the platforms that we're currently active on. But we know that TikTok is obviously skyrocketing in popularity, and it's an important channel to use to engage students. So definitely one that we're thinking about adding to our list.
I know that my teenage daughter wants me to be on TikTok.
Thank you. Thanks for the feedback as well.
Well, I just want to say thank you. That I am very excited about this. Really, for a long time, have felt like, as Leah said, no disparagement on the past, but just we have so much, we're just gushing, using her word, with stories here. And not just with stories, but a strategic message around what we're trying to do and what we're accomplishing, that I just feel so strongly that needs to be out there for a million and five reasons. And not least of all, that everybody here deserves the great credit, the kids, the staff, et cetera. One thing, it's not really a question, and I'm not saying it's not in there, but one thing I'll be curious to hear more about as we get down the road is the listening part. Because I, you talk about two-way, you talk about some of that, and I think that's great. And I love having interns. I think it's great to have student engagement. But the listening, both from students, even staff, and families. I think you've got, you've got all the pieces here. So it's probably baked in there somewhere, and it just isn't detailed yet. But I hope you'll focus on that, because it seems like you've got the talent here to do the right, the right thing in terms of gathering and then also using it to, you know, really support all kinds of things. So, great job. Thank you. I can't wait to hear more.
And then with the listening part, I'm glad you mentioned that, because that's something I wanted to talk about. In Parent University, we do have a separate section after the end where parents and families can engage with their questions and with their concerns. All of the topics for Parent University were brought up by parents themselves, which was really important for me when I was designing this. So there is a listening piece. We're just not discussing it as much, but it's there.
Excellent. Thank you.
And I just want to make a note, you may have noticed in the transmitter letter, that there's another position being funded for another community, family and community engagement person, who will be working alongside Alexia. So we plan to have that by the winter.
Really excited about that.
Okay. Monique?
Yes, so this is exciting. I don't recall ever receiving, okay. So this is, this is exciting, for me, a couple of reasons. I think in my nine years on the board, what I have often seen in the media is someone else telling our story. And us responding, but not controlling the narrative. And whenever I, you know, Pat is the spokesperson for the board, but whenever, during the campaign season and whenever I run, it's like, why are you running again? And I'm talking to people from the media. And their perception is that we don't allow them in our space. And so what are we hiding? Like, why aren't they not invited, you know? And so I thought that was really interesting. I had a million and one things going on, so I didn't think much about it then. But when you mentioned media training, I got really excited about that. And I'll add one more thing, maybe you should, you know, to consider in your list of who should go through that training, include the board members. Because we are often called, there's, you know, sometimes we get cold calls. Sometimes we, you know, get an email out of the blue. And the training is needed, even if you don't respond. Right? Even if you're not the spokesperson, we are often asked, how do you feel about this? So what happened here? Or what are your thoughts about that? And there's a technique to that as well, right? And, you know, joining the board, we don't come with that, that knowledge. But we're, we represent the community. And so we are often the first people they come to, because we're elected. And we represent the community, and we're, you know, we're elected by the community. So I think that is, it's important to expand that group and say, board members, you really need to be here for this. Right? Just so you know not, what not to say, or how to say no, you know? And, and so I'm excited by that and the fact that this sounds like, in this part, the media training and connecting with the media, we get an opportunity to tell our stories, because we have, to my history, maybe a long time ago, but it's just never felt solid enough where we are in control of all the good work that's going on.
Yes, I can 100% agree with that. What we want to do really is to build that trust. We want to make sure that it is not coming to, where the media is not coming, and we're not answering something reactively. We want to be proactive. And so, but it's really, it's building that trust with the media, local media, and, you know, in Evanston-Skokie and outside. You know, just, you know, just to, you know, develop relationships with these, with these media members, you know, and understand that, hey, they'll give them good stories, you know, so that you start with that. But, you know, I think that's so important, because we do, to your point, we don't want to be reacting all the time. And when it comes to media training, it's the same thing. Yeah, we'll definitely be able to give you strategies, you know, and key talking points for things, you know? But we're not going to give all of our, you know, of our secrets now. But yeah, but yeah, but yeah, there's a lot, but there's definitely, happy to help in any way possible.
And if I can add, everything that you sort of laid out about being proactive in telling our own story and shaping the narrative was exactly what Dr. Campbell laid out to me in our first meeting. So I'm glad that that came through in the presentation.
Good, good, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So yes, thank you, and it's been very fun and interesting watching, especially you, Rain, just kind of come in. And there's these moments where I see you, you know, taking pictures and then also just remembering a name and really, you know, weaving this, your principles, you know, the community and the students so much. So I love that. So thank you, and thanks to all of you. I'm thinking about a couple of things. One is really basic, probably already happening. I'm thinking about the accessibility of the handbook and the pilot being web-based versus a PDF that you scroll through, okay? And then thinking about making sure that it's searchable. Sometimes these websites don't have great search functions, because so much of what we expect for our families and our kids to be able to do or follow has to be able to be accessed. Okay, so the other thing I'm thinking about is our city. Our, our school is like a city. And so I respect the way you're approaching the comms and thinking about it. And one of the pieces that keeps coming to me is, one, while we want to meet kids where they're at, I would say no to TikTok, but I would, you know, they're also evolving. And, you know, there's kind of that social kind of thing, like, well, we're into Instagram, not the TikTok. So I just want us to keep a look on what we want versus where they are. And thinking about the ideas of they are influencers, but kind of practicing with being an influencer. And like, how do you do that? Because they are so fascinated by that, and it is very powerful. So then I keep thinking about, what does that mean for curriculum and instruction? And how do we, you know, use like the stories that are happening in civics to come out? You know, anyway, I just, I love that interplay between them learning the skill, but also being a part of the content. I'm thinking about holograms, just something to think about, like, how could we take? Yeah, like, we could do some great things in front of the fireplace that could bring them into the future in many ways. Because I'm like, okay, so print might be, but yeah, so, okay, for real, holograms, we could do it. You could, right here in my hand, you see my little?
Probably expensive.
It isn't, it isn't, Kendra, no, we can do it.
Kendra's like, oh my god.
It's not. The last thing.
I'm just looking at Kendra.
It isn't. I mean, the tech, it's here, the technology is here. The other, the last thing is just that I see media, it's not me coining this, but as the fourth estate. And so it's so powerful. And so if nothing else, to really understand, like, let's let that educate our entire school and our community, because it is such a powerful branch of who we are. So, thank you.
Did you want to?
Yeah, so per the pilot, last year, we began with Taya's help and a lot of interdepartmental help, making the pilot more readable, graphics and the design, like, we really tried to lighten it. And we're continuing to do that today. It's a big process, it's 120-some-odd. Yeah, it's a long, a lot of stuff. But, but to your point about making it accessible on the website, that is absolutely one of our priorities, to do that and to make it searchable, just because, you know, when people want to find some information, like, what page do I go to? Right? And so we want to make, we want to make that information accessible on the website itself. And then, yes, if they need to go, if they want to print out a pilot, sure. But we want, we want that information on webpages.
I just also wanted to echo the other sentiments of how exciting this all sounds to me. I love the energy you're bringing to this, your ideas. These are, there's just so many great ideas in here, I can't even comment on them all. But I'm especially excited about the, expanding the multilingual stuff and having better translation and interpretation services. I think that's something we've really needed. And the accessibility for people with disabilities is something, I mean, it's a no-brainer. I'm so glad we're doing that. The plain text, the alt text, things like that, it's just something that just needed to be done, you know? So I'm so glad you're doing that. The internship sounds really cool. It's just one more, you know, pathway to college and career readiness. Like, it's such a cool thing for you to offer them with the photography and everything. So anyway, I'm just excited about so many things you're doing. But at the end here, you were talking about the opportunities to enable board members to connect with the community. Just, you know, just so you know, I mean, it's something that we've discussed at length over the years. Every time we've had a board retreat, we talk about how we can better listen to and talk to and engage with the community and with students. So that is something that we are here for, and we are really excited about. And just wanted to let you know that we fully support that, so.
Thank you so much for the feedback. Thank you.
So you've heard that we're really all very excited about this. And we do talk about community, how we can connect with the community. There's even something through the Illinois School Board Association that, on community engagement, and we've looked through that. And maybe you might want to take a look at that. And maybe there might be some things that are useful. But we've been talking so much, and Rain, you know this, about how we need to tell our story. Because we have such an incredible story. And as we travel across the country and hear other folks talk about their work, you know, we, we know we're doing some pretty incredible work here. And we have to figure out, I think it is our responsibility to share our story, not for, not necessarily for us, so that we feel good about ourselves. But people, other districts need to see that this is a possibility. This isn't just words. You know, many districts have equity statements and diversity plans and whole binders, right? Yes, yes, it's not performative, right? So this is something that can be done. And, and we need to tell folks, this is something that can be done. Not that we're perfect, and we, we, we still have a long way to go. But this is, we can be an example. And I think it's important for us to, to think out of the box about how we can share that, how we can talk about our history and where we've been, and what we've done, and how we've gotten to where we are today. So not only within our community, it is important, but it's also important for us to, to share in a broader sense.
Thank you. We agree.
So thank you again.
Thank you.
It's really good to see you all, meet you all. So thank you, Rain. It's really nice to see you. All right. So our next item is the report on student well-being, goal number two, student services from 2022-23.
We have Dr. LeVizo and her team, who she will introduce to take us through that report.
Turn your mic on.
Sorry.
There you go, you're good.
I need to learn about communication.
I know you do. Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come. I know that, um, this report is something that is really important to our district and I am happy to be here this evening. And I just brought two people with me that are very important to our department and they are here to just offer some moral support because it's all quite nervous when you're having to present about the work you do and the work that you're passionate about. So we have Dr. Don DeLeo White. She is our Director of Student Support Services. And she's, Don DeLeo's been here, of course, uh, well, it's like seventeen, eighteen years, a long time.
Who's counting?
And then we have Sarah Long. She is our Director of Student Services and Sarah is new to our team and she is amazing and she brings a, a wealth of experience and, um, she is a great resource for us. So without any further ado, we're gonna just start moving. I don't know how to use a clicker. Uh, I don't know how, I don't know how. Yeah, and just going over, again, this is, um, our, our Student Services Well-being Report. You're gonna have an opportunity to see, we, I did something a little different this year, just really wanting to highlight some of the work that is done because it's so important to, um, our department. There it is. So our Student Services Administrative Team, I, you guys, I added, um, Manera Bola. She is our new Department Chair and, oh man, what an amazing, amazing opportunity we have to really continue on the work that's already been done in the department by adding, um, Manera, again, introducing everyone. So here, we're just gonna, just the overview of what the report and the layout of the report. We'll talk about the, the board, um, goals, the crosswalk, a little spotlight on some of the things that we've done. Then we'll look at our goal one and two and kind of drill down into it from that. Again, the looking forward is just what the anticipation is as we continue to move on, um, grow and develop programming to meet the needs of our students. Okay, so just looking at our, um, goal one, our goal one through four, which are really important to, um, the work that we do. I don't know if I need to read it explicitly, but I wanted to highlight what's really important is that we really, really hone in on being culturally responsive in our department and that's everyone in the department. And it's really important that we demonstrate culturally responsive practices in the delivery of our services to our students, our families, to ensure that there are educational outcomes that, um, support the student trajectories. We provide access and opportunity, um, provide language access service, excuse me, access services, including translation and interpretation services to support students and families who speak languages other than English. We're ensuring that important documents, communication and resources are available in multiple languages to facilitate communication and engagement with diverse communities. Again, we articulate with our feeder schools to, again, ensure the social emotional success for our incoming ninth graders. That's really important for us. Um, and there is a lot of work that goes into that. Ally Hart and her team, they are very instrumental in doing that. And what we do during those articulation is have an opportunity to garner more information about some of the needs of our students and how they're presenting. And we then try to craft and create interventions to support them as they are coming into our, um, care. Our well-being goal, we have our pre and post-hospitalization program. We do suicide prevention and awareness through our Signs of Suicide programming. Our Tier Two interventions, um, they include mental health groups that are designed to address skill deficits for students. And, and that is a very, um, brief, um, description of it. But there are a lot of, there's a lot of work that goes into developing groups and, and identifying, uh, and using data to, um, identify the groups that we have going. We have our IEP intervention groups and our, um, social workers, they service, you know, they case manage and they do a lot of work around helping students to reach their social emotional goals. Our mental health professional development opportunities, uh, we really look at ways that we can continue to build upon the knowledge and experience of our mental health team. Our academic intervention team is designed to support students struggling academically with some executive functioning and, um, some grade deficits as well. Looking at, um, our goal three, uh, it's really important for us and, and I think Kendra's proud of me because I always talk about really looking at how we are allocating our resources efficiently. Um, not just thinking that it's one big free-for-all and really being intentional with how we, um, spend money and, um, utilize the resources that we have to continue to grow and build. And that's just, you know, really important to me. Reduced non-essential expenditures. We also participate in grants with, um, Candace. She'll say, hey, you know, Dr. LeVizo, we have these grants available. She reaches out to us. Our nursing team and, and if it's something that we can utilize and leverage, where we can get some money to continue to build programming, we definitely jump at the opportunity. And some of our, um, really important that we are continuing to grow in this area is the community engagement and, and partnerships. We collaborate with YOU Community Agencies for Homeless Youth and Families in Crisis, Youth Lockout. We, um, work with our Oakton Early College. We partner with them to support the dual enrollment and, um, Michelle Vasquez has been very instrumental in, in supporting that with us. Alyssa's Mission with the Signs of Suicide Programming and Peer Services with Substance Use Education. Just a, a little spotlight on what's been happening is, um, the mental health intervention groups, they're having a positive impact on student well-being. Suicide risk assessments are declining annually. Signs of Suicide Program data demonstrates a decline in suicidal ideation. Fourteen percent of students identified as needing follow-up and eight percent decline from the year prior. Forty-one percent recommended new services and nine percent decrease from last year, meaning the year prior. Of course, this is again, all from our twenty, um, twenty-two, twenty-three data. Our ETHS, all school is successfully meeting the needs of students struggling to engage in the general education school setting. There were seventy-six active students in all school and thirty-three met graduation requirement. Did a different, um, I did a double check, just so you guys know, it is, uh, thirty-seven, uh, for the twenty-two, um, twenty-three school year. So that's gonna be reflected, um, in our other part of the data. I just did that right before I came back in here, so. Um, our FAS and SASH, which is our freshman and sophomore advisories, our study halls. Those classes are embedded with the social emotional learning activities to support students' growth and development. Our College and Career Services has partnered with community colleges and local employers to expand student career opportunities. Students worked in the healthcare and trade markets, exposing them to additional career pathways. And then we did collaboration with ETHS regularly. One of our interventions is to support, um, through, um, literacy through the lit lab. Just looking at our equitable and excellent, uh, education. So our translation services, again, we do verbal and written translation services, uh, within student services to allow families access to pertinent information. Something that we've done, done recently, I know that this is la- this is twenty, this is a year past, but we are continuing to grow in this area. We're looking at, um, enrollment online documents and how we can support families who are enrolling, who are non-English speakers and making sure that we remove barriers to access for them. Again, the freshman advisory study hall and sophomore advisory study hall. Looking at our culturally responsive practices, we are embedding those in our post-high school planning lessons that our counselors work very hard to ensure that students have access, all students have access to, and our course request planning. And that's just, we're continuing to grow, but these are just some highlights of what we do. Again, looking at the student well-being and I wanted, I, I wrote myself a note because I thought it was really important for us to, for me to say this. I wanted to highlight those that are in our department because we wouldn't be, uh, Student Services if we didn't have our mental health professionals. The amount of labor and work that they put into every single day is so important to how we continue to grow. So we have twelve social workers, they're primary mental health professionals. They provide, uh, mental health counseling, social emotional well-being support, group facilitation, involved in crisis support and intervention, um, uh, case management and community partnerships. They are always seeking opportunities to continue to grow and expand and their work. And they are certainly unsung heroes. I say that about social workers all the time because I think that, um, we just don't say it enough. That's what I was saying. Our school psychologists, we have four amazing psychologists. They provide expertise and these are, again, this is not an exhaustive list of what they do. These, this is just a look at. They provide expertise in behavioral support, academic testing, group facilitation, and they assist families in navigating special education process and law. They're very instrumental in that and, uh, they run groups as well. They, they are really amazing, dynamic people. We have school counselors that, um, I, I don't, I don't even know how they do it. They, they, they stay busy. It seems like from the time we start in August until the day they walk out the door. But they work on post-high school planning, monitor and support academic progress, provide social emotional support, course request, planning and guidance, as well as, again, they, they are mental health professionals. So they spend a lot of time building relationships with students to enhance and increase their awareness and their academic trajectories. This is just a list of some of the Tier Two Intervention Groups that were run in twenty-two, twenty-three. Our grief group, um, we had a black girl group that was centered on, um, school engagement. Our transfer support group is, uh, growing annually and, um, being, becoming more robust because it's so important to ensure that our students, um, when they're transferring in from other schools, feel like they're connected and a part of our ETHS family. The Executive Functioning Intervention Group, mindfulness intervention group, social skills, cognitive replacement intervention group, and again, our IEP SEL groups. Just wanted to note, Tier Two Groups really have an impact on student outcomes. It reduces, um, it is very instrumental in reducing social work referrals, improve our social and coping, our social skills and coping skills, and it improves academic performance. So in talking about that, I wanted to just bring, I, I did a research so that I can show you just the decline in our social work referral numbers. While it isn't significant, it is important to note and it, the work surrounding this is a continuous goal to decline our social work referrals and see how we can do more wraparound for our students. Also, uh, things that we offer, which is really important to note as well, is we had a hundred and twenty-seven unique students who were hospitalized in twenty-two, twenty-three. We had a hundred and twenty-eight hospitalized in twenty-one, twenty-two. Thirty-two of those students in twenty-two, twenty-three experienced multiple hospitalizations. And then we had forty-five in twenty-one, twenty-two. There again is a de- decrease in that amount of students that we continue to see experiencing hospitalizations for various reasons, but primarily for, um, our mental health students. We offer homebound services and we had a hundred and seventeen unique students who received homebound instruction. Again, it was a decrease from the one hundred and forty-six in twenty-one, twenty-two. Of that number, a hundred and two of the se- one seventeen were due to medical or mental health concerns. So there, it's conflated because it's, you know, we have students who are on homebound because they broke a leg or, you know, different, various reasons. So, um, wanted to make sure that that was noted and that fifteen of those numbers, they, they were administrative requests. Looking at our, um, suicide risk assessments. Again, small decrease in the risk assessments that we have done, but still worth noting. I think what was really important was to note that, um, our, our risk assessments are decreasing, but more importantly, the level of risk is decreasing. So, um, if you look at the two years when we're doing a comparison, um, those who have been, who were deemed high-risk assessment, the number has decreased, um, moderate and low. And just, you know, for you guys to know, risk assessments are done primarily by our social workers. And, um, but our counselors and social workers, I mean, excuse me, our counselors and psychologists do engage in, um, risk assessments. But our, our social workers are primary and it's all based on students presenting referrals or someone notifying the social worker. Families can sometimes call in. So there are various reasons why we will conduct a risk assessment and it is a, a really good tool to use, so. Moving to our student support teams, another, um, really important intervention is our grade level teams really work collaboratively, very collaboratively to refer students to, um, SST, what we call them. So we had in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty, two hundred and forty-three unique students were referred. Of that, if you, you can look at the breakdown and I thought this was really important to extract from this was our black and Hispanic, brown referrals are consistently higher than other race and ethnic groups, not significantly higher, but consistently. And we also had some in- income indicators when we looked at male status and we, uh, disaggregated the data through that across all four quarters for low-income students compared to full and reduced male status, you still see a significant, and the higher, um, SST referrals. Now SST referrals are based on school refusal, grades. There are various reasons why, uh, someone may refer, but anyone can refer. A teacher, a social worker, um, can refer to SST. But after further investigation for next year, we wanted to look at the intersectionalities, right? And seeing if, is there a one-to-one relationship with, um, race and ethnicity and socioeconomic status to see if that, they're overrepresented in our SST referrals. Our academic intervention team, again, um, the work that they do is based off of our DNF report. So our counselors, um, oftentimes will refer to, um, our AIT team. And it's three staff members who work on executive functioning, um, academic trajectory, working with, in concert with our counselor, our grade level team to ensure that, um, they are working collaboratively to meet the needs of the students. We had ninety-two students referred to AIT in twenty-two, twenty-three. They do, which I thought was really amazing, they do this, um, survey where they wanted to inquire about executive functioning and what came out of that, these were students, self-reported, task initiation and emotional control were deficits that the students identified, um, as needs, not deficits, but needs to improve. When they also did their post-high school planning survey with them and, and discussed that, we found that thirty-six percent of our students wanted to go to a two-year college, forty-four percent a four-year, and fifteen percent trade school. So looking at ways that we can partner with, um, counselors and, um, post-high school planning more specifically around meeting those needs. So our five-oh-fours are growing at a rapid rate. You know, Dr. White, she's our five-oh-four coordinator. She's like, exasperating. So, I mean, you, uh, the proof is in the numbers and I, I can assure you, next year's, it will increase. But we have six hundred, we had six hundred and fifty-one active five-oh-four plans at the end of twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Again, that was a significant, significant increase from, um, the five-ninety-nine and twenty-one, twenty-two. We just continue to see the significant rise and, and the accommodations and the needs surrounding five-oh-fours. And we're doing everything we can to partner with teachers and social workers, just fully collaborating so that we're supporting students, our five-oh-four students and ensuring that their needs are being met and that they're also learning some self-advocacy. So we do have two case managers. So they have six hundred and fifty students between the two of them. They'll like that little shout-out. Yes, we will, we.
Well, excuse me, at one point this past school year, we had seven hundred and nineteen students with five-oh-four plans. Fifty-nine students were removed throughout the school. Um, fifty-nine students were removed throughout the school year for various reasons. Some students had case studies completed and transitions to I E Ps. Some students moved out of district. Some parents exited. Their students are five-oh-four plans. Um, we completed our incoming freshman transition meetings, May twenty-ninth. We have approximately a hundred and fourteen incoming freshmen with five-oh-four plans for this school year. We had one-seventeen last year, but that settles up today.
So we're talking about out school, which is, wow, we're doing some really good stuff in out school. Seriously, we really are. I mean, wait till next year, so you can continue to learn about. But uh, we had fifty-seven unique students enrolled in out school. Um, black and Hispanic students have higher enrollment rates than other races. Thirty-seven unique students graduated from out school. I see the number reflected. There's a, a survey that Dr. uh, White and her staff give to students and I just thought it was really important to highlight some of the um, comments that students brought, um, that they wrote and shared. And one student said, "The out-school program positively impacted me because it's harder for me to work and learn in a regular classroom and by it being a small class, it was easy to get help from the teacher." Another student reported, "The out-school program positively impacted my education experience because I was having a really hard time outside of school. The out-school program helped me ease the pressures I had outside of school and helped me get back on track with my education." There were several um, quotes that students had shared, you know, about specific teachers, about the, the staff and how they felt connected and welcomed. And I just thought that was really important for us to note. And as a result of this data and just looking at the data overall with credit deficiencies and things like that, we have, we're expanding and growing and looking at ways that we can really support students um, overall. I'm not going to read all this, but this is, our college and career services team, they really do a lot of work and preparation to help students holistically from our FAFSA application um, support. Our Wildkid Futures Day, they, they're very instrumental in the planning of that. Early post-high school planning for freshmen and sophomores and their families, we do an evening program, um, resume workshops. We hosted several career um, opportunities with Aviation Day, which is amazing, the Career Pathways, Youth Job Center, looking at the ASVAB Administration and Interpretation for Military. Um, we partner with Pathways to Engineering Night, Pathways to A P Forum, and offer summer programming and that helped students organize and writing for our s- rising seniors with applications and essay writing. And then the biggest and most exciting thing is like that prep to E T H S. It is nothing more rewarding than seeing those kids and they keep knocking at my door to take a picture. Uh, Ally, I'll get her when she comes back because it's, it's really cool though. You just get an opportunity to see so many kids and they are so excited about being a wild kid. Again, college and career readiness and enrollment. Uh, this was really important to note, um, our college enrollment for fall, which was immediately following graduation. Our um, number of students based on race that went immediately to college in twenty-two, there were ninety, ninety-one point three percent Asian, sixty-two point four percent African-American, fifty-seven Hispanic, Latino, um, two or more races, and seventy-nine percent white. There are some disparities in the numbers, but um, we're working. If that is the path that students are taking, some students are deciding to go to the military. Some students are deciding to go into a trade and I think that, that is something that we are looking to see how we could be more robust in supporting those initiatives. The college enrollment, again, for um, gender is, is, again, it, it's, it's not a variation, large variation, but some differences. So, the college and career readiness um, team, they um, readiness, the college, they give a survey and I thought this was an interesting, um, Beth Ari shared this with me and I thought it was important to note. Um, they were, they're asking students, "How prepared are you when you're leaving to um, go out into college?" And you have thirty-seven of those who responded, thirty-seven percent said they were prepared. The little ones who say, "I got it done," that probably would have been me. Some are still working on it and deciding and somewhat prepared. And, and it's, I don't think that this is indicative of anything about um, rigor in cur- curriculum or anything like that. It's just where they situate themselves when they're asked that question. Surveys are often, right now, right, they're how I feel when I'm responding to that, so. But it still was important for me to share that with you guys. Looking at our G P A, I, I was so excited about this as a first-gen college student. Families report when they are doing enrollment online, um, they were, they self-report what their um, education is. And sixty per- sixty-two percent of um, our students that were first-gen enrolled in college the fall immediately following high school. Uh, forty-one percent en- enrolled in Illinois College or University and their average G P A was a three-point-two-five while they were matriculating at E T H S. And that, that's really amazing. Just did a cumulative um, G P A dive and for our graduate year, twenty-twenty-three, the um, average was three-point-two-three, uh, twenty-four. They're all ranging around the same, about three-two-five. And um, our freshmen, of course, they don't get an opportunity to take some of the, it is unweighted, but being new as a freshman, I still think that is very commendable to have a three-point-one-six at that time because it, it's, that transition to freshman years is, can be tough. So, just looking forward, I, based on um, review of our data from the well-being survey, past tier-two group interventions, social work referrals and risk assessments, we determined the need for more data-driven interventions to address students' emerging needs. To this end, we will expand our tier-two group interventions to include more targeted, evidence-based approaches to better support students. And again, it's not an exhaustive list, but these are some of the um, groups that have run this school year. So, um, the executive functioning is more robust, um, we're doing a more progress monitoring. Our grief group, um, we're learning that we are expanding that and we're going to be getting more training for our um, staff who run that. Um, we have L G B T Q plus support group. Uh, there are just a lot of really good groups that are running. Um, something that they took great pleasure in and um, had, I had an opportunity to observe, which I thought was amazing, was the Student Athletes Social Skill Group. Really an amazing group that addressed engagement, um, school refusal, um, academic outcomes and things. It, it is a great group and a um, great group of people doing it. So, these are just, again, some of them. And our mental health first aid training is something that is really important because it helps us to identify um, students who are potentially dealing with substance or mental health issues. And that is it. Thank you, Hannah. Please, any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Excellent report. Lots of information.
Thank you very much.
Uh, but this is goal two. This is, this is our big goal and we, we know how important goal two is. We know how important students' well-being is and if they aren't emotionally stable, they are not going to benefit from all this great academic, all, all of these great academic resources we have here. So, um, so I appreciate these groups, since you have them up. They're not large groups, right? These are pretty, pretty small.
Oh yeah, I don't think, maybe ten to fifteen?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And it's usually always a social worker in its turn.
Okay, so the two facilitators. Um, questions, board?
Okay. I win. Thank you. Uh, the work is extensive and um, obviously very meaningful. Um, I have a couple of questions, but the one that I think's most important is really for you guys to, when I think about tier-one um, being the answer to a lot of what we're seeing is the struggles and the um, well-being of our kids, what do you either wish, wonder, want for us to help support you in that space? Like what could you um, maybe suggest? Or just, you know, tell us what's troubling um, in that space so that we can help decrease what has to happen in a tier-two space?
Yeah, tier-one is, is, it drives, right, it drives the M T S S process. And I think that we are working towards getting there. We have a committee that's working towards M T S S um, and really implementing more. We have our tier-one that is our F A S and S A S and things like that, but we could um, really develop more programming around tier-one. I, I think that is really important, I, but I, I know that that's in the works. So, when you say what we need, I'm, I see tier-one not necessarily as a student services, but a school-wide initiative. And um, so, yeah. So just thinking about that, I don't know if you guys have anything you might want to add in terms of what could be instrumental for tier, tier-one? Okay.
Okay. Um, okay, so given that, like as you said, that's really school-wide and I know you have a, a, you know, more narrow focus. Um, and I keep trying to hold, that was twenty-two, twenty-three and now we're in twenty-three, twenty-four and um, I'm wondering about possibly one or two things that you saw, that you did this year in response to what you're reporting on, um, that we could just understand kind of some of how those are being connected.
Oh yeah. So, we um, really took the data from the well-being survey. And while it is a survey based sometimes rooted in emotional responses depending on when somebody takes it, right? Um, it still has validity. So we, that's how we built the groups for this year. It was based on looking at that data and saying, "Let's be intentional. Let's see the, how, where the data fell." How, what are some of the um, the lifts that we could do? And, and li- over the summer, I sat down and just said, "Okay, let me create a spreadsheet. Let me look at this." Harassing Dr. Levy all the time and like, "I don't understand." So tell me about that. And, and she's so amazing. But that's where I, and, and, and so even next year's groups are even more robust because we know our needs are increasing, but um, we need to target a- and hone in a little bit more and saying, "Okay, school refusal, yeah, school refusal, but what about it? How do we marry school refusal and engagement and, and resilience and all those things together to create a group that are really target, even our referral system and things like that? We, we've really worked um, intentionally to um, develop an opportunity to, to target students and how do we get those students in? Because we can run five-hundred groups, but we gotta get our kids to come in and participate. And, and that's what we're, we're really working on. And, and our social work and psych lead, they have been phenomenal this year with being intentional and, and helping us to identify and we've been very collaborative. So, this is twenty-two, twenty-three, but twenty-three, twenty-four is amazing. The, the data is going to show that even through twenty-six because we, we're, we're intentional and we're building, building. I think some an- attendance incentives will be amazing and we're looking at how we could maybe do that in our um, attendance and school refusal group that we're going to be running. But the, again, and that's tier-one, but we're just looking at how we can be more collaborative, also collaborating outside of student services. Because if we don't do that, the teachers, the uh, department chairs, the other departments are not going to know what students need and what, yes. And so, being more communicative in that uh, area is really important.
So I also wanted to add um, groups this year. So I was not here, of course, when all the, you know, happenings happened that um, caused us to have these groups or the groups that ran at the beginning of the year. But um, it was really fantastic joining the team this year because one of the things that I really was excited to see growing in our department is how not only these groups came off the ground, but also how we were able to change the ways that we collected and progress monitored, um, whether these groups are being effective or not. And that's a big push that we are taking into the upcoming school year as well because having these groups is fantastic, but like Dr. Loviso was mentioning, without being able to look at the data and systemically determine what needs to be tweaked in our curriculum for these groups to make them the most effective possible, how do we recruit effectively? How do we know that we are in fact selecting the groups that best fit our students' needs? All those things are crucial. So I think that is definitely a big push that was undertaken this year by our fantastic team and all our mental health practitioners. And it's something that I know that we're working really diligently on already. Over the summer, we have people already working on it as we go into the upcoming school year. So we start the uh, on the ground running.
Well, thank you. And I think that will be a really fun, fun, it sounds kind of not right, uh, very compelling story is if you can match some of that um, together with those names and then of those groups, let's say, and then obviously we don't want to identify any kids, but what the, the impact was.
Sure.
Uh, maybe not obviously a causal, but correlational kind of or correlated.
Absolutely.
So thank you, yeah.
Okay, so I have a five-oh-four question and then something, and then the other question is about something else. So, five-oh fours, so I was curious, as they continue to increase, um, do you have any comments on kind of like, are there any patterns in demographics, that kind of thing? And with that many students that we have at this point, what's that impact on our five-oh-four case managers and their ability to do their case management? How is that going?
Great question, Leah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in terms of the numbers increasing, there is definitely increase in demographics in terms of uh, the racial makeup of students that are receiving five-oh fours. We get a, the majority of five-oh-four plans are based on neuropsych evaluations that parents submit to us or documentation from physician or therapist. The five-oh-four case managers are, they're handling it. Uh, they obviously don't meet with three-hundred-plus students throughout the school year. There are some students who have more significant needs. But the goal is to touch base with all students throughout the school year. Uh, but again, there are some students that have more needs than others. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, and then I noticed, this is maybe a little bit of a picky question, but I noticed in the A I T val- uh, data in the report that there was also a statistic that said that thirty-seven percent of the student, the A I T students um, were involved in at least one school activity. And so, I mean, I'm very familiar with the fact that if your grades are low, you could also have a problem participating in extracurriculars and athletics due to grade eligibility. So I just want to acknowledge that. Um, and I also understand that the A I T team is primarily academic interventionist. But I was just curious, is, as students' grades improve, is that something our A I team is looking at in terms of getting students more involved and more connected in extracurriculars?
Actually, that's a really good question. That, that was a very intentional goal this year, for sure. Understanding that connectivity produces positive outcomes. And um, so our A I T coordinator, she's been very intentional with training and discussing the impact of students being involved. But the two um, A I T staff members, they are so rooted in the community and they both uh, understand impact. They both understand that. So when it says activities, it could be a club and your grades don't necessarily impact um, you participating in a club, but more like sports or things like that. So saying, "Hey, if you want to find some connection here, what can we help connect you to?" what can we help connect you to? And we have, I I I think it's uh the list of clubs is just, i- it's something for every single person in this building. And uh and so they work with them to try and identify something that can bring them connected. Many times, um students who typically are on the caseload, they do, they have a D or typically more Fs than Ds. But the goal also is to move them forward. And you can't see success like that without having them connected to something. And that's one of the main um goals of making sure that they're connected to something. We have capital league that's not necessarily inside of ETHS, but the um Black Man League with um Northwestern. And and so just really trying to get them involved in something.
That's great. And just my last question. Where I'll be quiet then. Um so um with grief support, so I know we have a really robust grief group. Um what if a student, sometimes the group setting um might not be exactly a fit or for whatever their circumstances of their losses, it might not be exactly appropriate. What what are we doing these days in terms of other supports for a student like that?
That's a good question too, um because not all students will participate in a grief. And grief isn't always a loss in terms of death. It could be d- divorce. I mean, just many things that cause grief for students. Um but again, we have so many community partnerships and there there are often a lot of referrals if a counselor or a social worker feels that the family could benefit from something outside of the ETHS where they can have a more consistent um process where and oftentimes that they have groups outside of ETHS. And some students, we don't even know what's going on, if they're not sharing it. I think that um the community has been amazing when um we've had um a grandparent or someone die. Parents will call into the attendance office and notify us. And at that point, an email goes out to the entire grade level team that says, this has happened, can we have somebody contact this family? Immediately, one of our grade level staff will reach out to that family, assess the need for that student, and then we begin um our supports for that student. So oftentimes, if it isn't, um I, cause I have a student that I refer to grief and they're like, I'm not going. So you then connect them to resources outside, because a lot of times it may just be that I don't wanna do it here in the building, I wanna connect outside of here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions, board? Yeah, you you covered, you covered so much.
I always ask every year, what do you want? What do you need? But I I let them do it this year, so. But the question still stands, so don't be shy.
So, yeah, go ahead. Respond, what what is it that, what do you want?
Well, we can always use another five oh four case manager. While they are, you know, uh handling their caseload, um it can be overwhelming. I like another building to run an alternative school program. This is a wish list, you said ass, I'm asking.
We'll talk, Donnie.
Oh, you call me Donnie in front of the board, okay.
Dr. White for the record.
Okay, well, thank you again. Thank you for this report and all this great, great information. And thank you for taking care of our students.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, so moving right along with our agenda, the next item on the agenda is FOIAs, we have several.
We have nineteen.
Nineteen, I, okay, I can't count that fast.
We have one by Pepperbrink, one by Dowling, one by Kendrick, one by Maltice, one by Kendrick, one by William. Three by Wang, one by Hernandez, and nine by Tosh. And the responses are in your packet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you, Dr. Beavis. All right. Right. Do we need a break? Okay, okay, so we are actually, okay, we can keep going here. So we did FOIAs with board committee reports. I know that I have a report.
I have a quick one.
Okay, okay, Monique.
Uh, yeah, so the discipline committee met May fourteenth, so that was the last meeting of the school year. And um pretty much, we just spent time um discussing the tardy probation and social probation um da- demographics. So we didn't, we didn't have the data, and so the the committee discussed um what should the data be? So we spent a lot of time um talking about the breakdown of the data that would help us um determine trends, you know, concerns if we're doing better over, you know, years or what have you. So that was the majority of the um the conversation. So I'm I'm guessing that work will be done over the summer or, and we'll talk about it at the beginning of the school year. And I think that's it, the, I, so I made a recommendation that the discipline committee could use, or administration who who oversees the discipline committee could use the committee um to sort of prep for the board that they, you know, board meetings that when they present the data. Especially if you have board members that are on the committee, because there may be questions or gaps in the report that we can say, you know, this is gonna come up, or this is a priority for the board, so you may want to um lift this a little bit. And and, you know, they said they had never done that, that they usually just pull the information together and give and present it in front of the board. And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the board's present on, presence on the committee is to help um collaborate with, you know, everyone in the committee, but to to lift those things that are are very critical um for board, for the board. And so we talked about that and they, you know, they were like, yeah, we never, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful if you all looked at that, those data categories.
I agree.
Yeah, so we'll we'll be sure that you all begin to do.
It makes so much sense, and then looking at them throughout the year.
Right.
To kinda keep that in in mind, knowing when that report's gonna happen.
Right.
And planning for it, for that report.
And then when we have a year's worth, where's Pete? And when we have a year's worth, we can then start doing apples to apples. What did it look like October previous year? And so we can do a little bit more of that progress monitoring that we've been talking about.
Right.
In real time.
Well, and it it was lifted here tonight when we were talking about engagement and social probation is a big deal.
It's a big deal.
So if some of our um students that are um maybe fi- you know, finding the school year challenging and they find themselves on social probation, there, I'm sure there's some dots being connected in the classroom, in um being tardy, in their lack of engagement. And so, you know, it was just a a something that that I lifted at that meeting. I was like, engagement is critical for us, because we know that it translates to a student feeling like they belong here. And and so we would want to see, like, what does that look like for a student? Is that the same student that is having, you know, problems time over time over time? So, yeah, just lifted some of that stuff up. It was a good discussion, um but pretty much, that's what we talked.
Yeah, I know that um we come in and do these reports one month at a time, but you know, the reality is, much of what we talk about is connected to everything.
Everything.
Everything, yes.
Yeah.
It is.
Yeah.
So um so I I think that's a great way to think about that. Maybe we can think about that with some of our other work. So I attended um I attended the Park School Advisory Committee, and uh I did write a report. Uh but it's gonna be uploaded for our July meeting, and it's just a brief report because there there will be minutes that will come out, and the minutes will um cover everything. And there is an agenda that's several pages long, but you know, the Park School, Park School spends time talking about their instructional priorities, and they go through them um in a lot of detail. Um so there's communication and language skills, their priorities are uh communication and language literacy and vocational community and daily living, living skills. Um so that's, those are the areas that they're focusing on and working on. And uh they continue to um highlight their climate, culture, and collaboration uh practices. There's a school work plan, and uh Park has prioritized this. And they have um developed goals and they monitor goals as well. So all of that can be found in the minutes and particularly in their their agenda. So um and you'll see, you'll see this later. Are there other board reports, board committee reports? We're at the end of the year. Okay, so we are at the superintendent's report, Dr. Campbell.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Um as we conclude another year, I am proud of our accomplishments and our collective efforts that we've done over uh over the course of the academic year. And uh we've certainly navigated a lot of challenges, as well as cele- celebrated significant accomplishments. And we continue to lay a groundwork um to advance towards our goals. Uh I just have a couple of uh updates and a few highlights from the past month. The first being that the ACT is back.
Yes, it is.
Um the Illinois State Board of Education recently announced it will be switching from the SAT to the ACT for the state's uh high school accountability assessment. Starting in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, high school students will be required to take the ACT to graduate. Uh students will have the option to take the SAT at their own expense if the college or university they're applying to requires it or they feel it would be beneficial to their application. We've communicated this information to our families and recognize that this transition carries significant implications for our students, and we will be working to support them, uh just as uh we adjust our resources to accommodate the change. And so all of the longitudinal data that we have, we're starting again from scratch, folks, all right? Uh we will also, uh uh there i- is a return of semester exams. We will be reintroducing semester exams and experiences in the upcoming school year. These exams will enable students to showcase their learning and solidify their understanding of the material covered throughout the semester. We understand that this change may prompt questions and concerns from students and families, but please be assured that we could provide, committed to providing a comprehensive uh information and support to assu- uh ensure a smooth um transition. And when we talk about semester exams, what we're really talking about in educational terms is uh multi-unit summative assessments. And this is gonna look different by team and department, and Dr. Beavis is working with department chairs and teachers on how to reconstruct a semester uh exam uh or summative exam uh as well as we're looking at what that week will look like. Was looking at some old semester exam schedules, and I'm like, I still like that one, and that takes us back five or six or seven years. Um highlights, graduation, as you know, we held our commencement ceremony May nineteenth, celebrating the accomplishments and futures of our graduates. It was a beautiful ceremony, and thanks to all of um those who were able to attend. Congratulations once again to the class of twenty twenty-four. Summer school is currently underway, uh underway at ETHS, and Dr. Loviso, I've liked Dr. Loviso and many others. I've had a lot of students in my office taking pictures, mostly with a prep to humanity, prep to humanities, Lord have mercy, prep to ETHS. Uh ETHS is offering students valuable opportunities to enhance their learning and stay on track for academic success. These programs are designed to provide additional support, enrichment activities, and credit recovery options to ensure all students can meet their educational goals. Uh in athletics, uh once again, I want to acknowledge the tremendous success of our athletic program during the spring season, season. Girls soccer, boys baseball, and girls lacrosse all had impressive ru- runs and won regional championships. Both breweries and girls track and field competed at state, bringing home IHSA medals. Boys tennis also competed at state where senior Finn Pollard made history for the first time uh ETHS's program in its, in its his final season, finishing fifth as a singles player. This is the highest finish for a wildcat singles player since Don Moore finished fifth in nineteen seventy-three. And it's the first IHSA state medal for tennis brought home to Evanston since nineteen eighty-five. And finally, our girls water polo team had an incredible season that ended in a state runner-up finish, the best in ETHS history. Congratulates to all. And lastly, uh in addition, as we approach Juneteenth, we recognize the significance uh of importance of this historic day in commemorating the liberation of enslaved black people from slavery in the United States and celebrating black culture and resilience. We look forward to our participation in the Juneteenth parade, I believe that's this Saturday in Evanston, joining our community and honoring this important occasion, and happy summer, everybody.
Wow, thank you. And here we are. The one that fits in your hand. All right. Committee, so we are a committee of a whole.
Awesome. Thank you, board.
Yes.
Happy to be here. Tis the season.
Yes, it is.
To budget. An exciting time for me. Happy to be here, like I said, just to present uh yet another balanced budget. So we'll get right into it. We're here to talk about the FY twenty twenty-five budget uh for District two oh two. So eighteen consecutive years of balanced budgets. Uh we, you know, are have made sure to keep our cash reserves and fund balances within the acceptable ranges per the board policy and just continuing our strong commitment to a long-term fiscal sustainability. Board goal number three, shout out, happens to be my favorite. Um and then this is just, you know, going over the budget timeline uh that I know that I've shown to you all before, about how this is a continuous process, right? Because as soon as we get through one part, you're right to the next. And I'll be honest in saying that I'm already thinking about FY twenty-six, which is kind of insane, but it's it's where we are, you know? As you're working on FY twenty-five and everything and uh addressing all the needs and determining how we can improve in the future, it all, you know, it all just keeps on going, so. So some different financial considerations that came up in the preparation of the tentative budget. Just some uh like, for example, ESR funding, which we know was significant a couple of years back, kinda tapered off some last year. But now this year, there is not gonna be any ESR funding um in the budget moving forward. And so that's just one thing that um we'll see later on for like our federal funds decreased a a moderate amount, and that would be why. Uh corporate property replacement tax continues to be at risk, so I know that last year, we talked about how um that funding source decreased by about two million dollars, and so that's pretty significant. There's a lot that can be done with two million dollars. And so even now, this year, we don't have what the final number's gonna be for FY twenty-five. We um didn't budget for any increase in that category, but there is a potential that it could decrease which means that that would impact what is presented to the board for the final budget. And so we'll just be keeping an eye out for what to expect with that, once those numbers are released, for sure. But there is a possibility that there could be a decrease there. And then, of course, there's just other things at play, such as the state's financial condition. Of course, we, um, have evidence-based funding and categorical, um, aid that comes from the state. And so, um, if the state's financial condition deteriorates and they're unable to fund everything, uh, the same way, then that's going to impact the district as well. Um, so, you know, one example of that would be like transportation, which is not being funded at the same level that it was previously or not keeping up with the transportation costs that have increased. And so that's just one example. And then, um, other things that we've talked about before, like the po- potential for pension shifts and the impact that that could have on the district. Um, and then also with P TEL that we have inflation that sometimes is outpacing, uh, what we're able to increase our largest revenue source by, which is property taxes. And then, of course, the current labor market. So we have a number of contracts that are in place and some of those contracts, although, you know, they may have been done a couple of years back, right? We know that we have to have those increases, even if our, um, our revenue is not increasing by the amount of those contracts, we still have to meet those, um, those amounts. So just different considerations to put in place when we're going through and doing the budgeting process. And this is just showing the history of C P I used for P TEL. So we're gonna be a blend of five percent and three point four percent for this fiscal year because it, um, our fiscal year co- c- um, covers two property tax years. And so it's gonna be a blend of that five percent and three point four percent. But this is also just showing the last ten years so that you can kinda see, um, where it usually hovered, um, as far as like two percent, one point nine percent. And then, you know, uh, we had a couple of years where that shot up and increased and was over five percent. Five percent is what we were capped at, so that's why, um, that's what's shown here on this chart. And then now we're down to three point four percent. So still above, uh, what was the norm prior to the pandemic. Ooh, I want to get through this presentation without saying pandemic, okay? So, uh, just some specifics about the budget. A hundred and four point nine million budgeted for F Y twenty-five, that is our total budget. Uh, so that's seven percent more than F Y twenty-four. But I wanna, uh, draw some, draw our attention to the operating budget, which is ninety-nine point five million and is four point seven percent more than F Y twenty-four. And so the difference, uh, here with the seven percent and the four point seven is because the operating budget includes, uh, certain funds. Our education fund, which is like a general fund, that's where the majority of the spending is happening. And then, of course, there's the operations and maintenance fund, transportation fund, working cash and tort. Other funds, which are not included in the operating budget, would be, uh, bond and interest, I R M R, social, in social security, and then our capital improvement fund. Uh, there's a significant increase in our capital and what's budgeted in the capital improvement fund, uh, because we are hoping to see some increased revenue streams, uh, in that fund in order to fund some of our, our much-needed efforts to renovate some curricular spaces. And so because of that, um, anticipated revenue stream, that, that's a higher budget. But our operating budget is not increasing by such a significant amount, really, when you're looking at our operat- operating bud- budget, four point seven percent. And then some highlights for the revenue side of things. So, of course, um, heavily relying on property taxes, as I mentioned before, that's our largest revenue stream. So eighty percent of revenues are property taxes, over eighty percent. With our budget this year, it's, uh, eighty-three percent, actually. And so properties taxes are subject to property, the property tax extension limitation law. And so what that means is that even if inflation is seven percent, we can only do five percent. So it's the lower of five percent or C P I for the year. And then, um, and we talked about the blend of five percent and three point four percent for the different levy years. And we are expecting to see consistent state revenue, uh, evidence-based funding, we're anticipating will still come in around the three million dollars that it usually, uh, hovers around. Sometimes that may vary by a hundred thousand or so, but we're expecting it to be about three million. And then federal, uh, revenue includes title grants, Medicaid and I D A funding. And property taxes increasing by seven point two percent while corporate per- personal property replacement tax decreasing by point three five. So that's really right about the same as where it was budgeted last year. There's actually a chart in the tentative budget that'll allow you to see the exact dollar amount side by side. Um, not much of a difference there, but like I said, we have to wait to get that final anticipated number. And then, if necessary, make adjustments. And so, um, and then the federal aid that's expected to decrease by four point four, five percent, that is mainly due to the ESER funding that's no longer available to us. And then this is just a pie chart, just a little visual aid so that you can kinda see how the large chunk of that is property taxes and then the other pieces of the pie that are made up by, uh, other local revenue, E B F, state aid, federal aid and, and, uh, C P, P R T. And then on the expenditure side of things, we have, um, our expenditures are grouped into, uh, these different categories, salaries, benefits, purchase services, um, supplies and materials, capital outlay, tuition and then miscellaneous. And so, of course, the majority of our budget is dedicated to salaries and benefits, um, when it comes to education, very much so, a people business. And so we'll be able to see that in the pie chart, that that really makes up, uh, over seventy percent of our, of our expenditures. And so we see that our salaries and benefits are increasing by six point three percent from F Y twenty twenty-four. I had talked about employment contracts being, uh, a major driver in that, in that expenditure category. And then when it comes to our capital outlay, it's increased by six point seven nine percent in the education and operating and maintenance funds. And then here, when we're talking about salary and benefits, that would be the two largest chunks of this pie. So we have, uh, the sixty-nine percent for salaries. And then when it comes to those fringe benefits, that's another nine percent. So we're talking about seventy-eight percent of our, um, expenses really just being, uh, to take care of our staff for salaries and benefits. And so district goals, um, of course, we've gotten to talk about these quite a bit this evening with each presentation, but it's because it really grounds all of the work that we do here at the district, my work included and the work of, um, my staff and colleagues, um, in my department. And so, you know, I, I did say that goal three is my favorite, but I actually, I actually do care about all of these goals, right? Because when we're, when we're putting together the budget, it's really telling the story of everything that we're trying to achieve here for our students. And so, um, just like these goals are speaking to all of our students and the, the budget too speaks to all of our students and to making sure that they're receiving the equitable and excellent education laid out in goal one and that we're doing all of the things, right? So, um, definitely just grateful for the opportunity because I get to work with so many wonderful colleagues that are furthering this work. So even, you know, when you're reading the transmittal letter and it's talking, uh, from Dr. Campbell and it's talking about adding another, um, community engagement person, right? And so that happens through the budget. So I feel like the budget really tells a story. Um, it really shows, um, how we're prioritizing here at E T H S. And so it was just really cool to see, um, the work being reported to the board tonight and seeing how that links directly to the budget. Oh, values-based budgeting, exactly what I'm talking about here, right? So. And so, um, just some of the things that, uh, you know, the premise that we have here for when it comes to values-based budgeting, just obviously we have limited resources, right? And, um, we know that we have so much work to do, but we make sure that instruction, of course, is a top priority. And we wanna make sure that we're maintaining a reasonable student-to-teacher ratio and avoiding personnel layoffs wherever possible. And so, um, that's coming through in this budget. And I think that, you know, when you're reading the transmittal letter, you get to see just so many amazing things that are being done. But of course, we know that it's all about instruction. And so even how, when we're talking about meeting student needs, when it comes to mental health needs and trauma, because we know that you can't talk to a student about learning if you can't take care of the other parts of what's going on, right? It's a, you have to look at the whole picture. And so we're making sure that we're focusing on all of those needs. Um, we're not just saying, you come here, you sit down and it's gonna be a book that you're, that you're gonna read and we're gonna teach you and that's it, right? We, we recognize that we have to look at all, the entire student. And so the budget is working to do that, um, in conjunction with everyone else in this building. And so, uh, also just continuing to fund our equity work and then making sure that we have additional supports in student services, uh, related to M T S S. So, you know, whether that may be an additional position or new software that allows us to better track what, um, the strides that we're making when it comes to these multi-tiered systems of support, we're just making sure that we're working to, to get everything in place that we need to. And then continuing to build our career pathways model, so expansion of the job shadow program each year, funding for dual credit with Oakland Community College, uh, for students who are enrolled in dual credit classes at E T H S. This year, we, uh, had the wonderful opportunity where we were able to open our health science lab, which has been extremely exciting. Um, amazing, sorry. It's like my, the, the new to- the new great toy, it's like the new gem, right? And so just very exciting, but. But of course, you know, as we, as, as that carries on, there's gonna be some expanded programming and we'll be funding that as well. And so, um, which also just aligns with the, um, the effort to build our career pathways model. So, uh, just talking about next steps, so the final budget is gonna include these additional sections. So today, um, you have tentative budget before you that has the executive summary in the financial section, but we'll have three additional sections when it comes time for the final budget in September. And this actually shows that timeline, so the budget hearing will be on September sixteenth. And then, uh, we'll publish the budget hearing notice no later than August eighth. And of course, the tentative budget will be on display on our website as well, um, for at least thirty days prior to our budget hearing. And then at that time, we'll do the final budget approval in September and file the budget with the county clerk prior to October thirty-first. Questions?
Excellent. You make it so clear and I, and I love reading the letter, um, at the beginning when you just bullet point how to respond, um, how the budget responds to all of our goals. I really do appreciate this evening because we have talked about all the goals and, uh, really in very intentional ways, so I, I think it's good. All right, questions, yeah, you have a question? Monique, so, sorry.
Oh, no, I don't.
Oh, I do have one question.
Okay.
Okay, I just was wondering if you could say a little bit more about, you said corporate property replacement tax continues to be at risk. Um, just comment, what do you, at risk in what way or what's going on?
Yeah, so for, for the corporate, uh, personal property replacement tax, it is really like a reflection of how the economy is doing, the state economy is doing. And so sometimes that can fluctuate. And so there were years where we saw great increases and that was super exciting because, you know, it increased year after year after year. And unfortunately, for the first time in a long time, we saw it decrease last year. And so, um, I mentioned that that decreased by, off the top, I wanna say one point nine million. So rounding up, you know, about two million dollars that it, it, it decreased from F Y twenty twenty-three to F Y twenty twenty-four. So when I'm, when I say it continues to be at risk, it could decrease even further. And there's act- and so that's my thought, is that we don't know yet exactly what's gonna happen. Usually that information is released between when we do the tentative budget and when we do the final budget. And so that was a significant, um, decrease that we had to do between the tentative and the final last year. And so what that number will be, I'm not quite sure yet. And so just recognizing that, yes, I've presented this budget, it's balanced, but there may be some work to do between now and when the final is presented.
And then what I'm hearing from that is that this is definitely related directly to what's going on in the business community in Evanston.
In the state.
A- as far as the, as, as, as what, what's possible with that tax.
Yes, but not only Evanston.
Oh, yeah. Oh, it isn't, okay.
It's broader.
I didn't realize, okay, that's what I wasn't sure about, okay.
Yeah.
And it's never a good day when the CFO comes to the superintendent and says, the corporate property replacement tax is two million below. And she's gotta find two million dollars in the budget to cover that.
Right, right.
It's never a good day, that's what she had to do last summer.
Yes.
Pat?
Um. No, I, um, I just wanna thank you, as I always try to do, always remember, we teased you, but you really, this is so amazing. And as I sat here and listened to you, I mean, I had read the report and I was watching the screen while you were talking, but eighteen years of balanced budgets, how many years of a triple A rating? I mean, I, I'm familiar with and have worked with districts all around and people would die for half of that, really. Um, and so I just, I, I feel like that has to be lifted up and that our community really needs to understand, we've become a bit of a given, do you know what I mean? Like, oh yeah, E T H S has got it covered. That is not without a lot of really thoughtful, mindful planning and budgeting. And we're still doing great things. We still, with these balanced budgets, with, you know, tightening, we still get things done. We still add positions, we still address needs, curricular, social, emotional, otherwise, the building. Um, and it just, I mean, I, I just, I really feel like that has to be lifted every year and just really clarified to our community that this is amazing, that we're able to do all this and that you do this, you lead this and that your team does such a great job and all of our staff who help in the budgeting process throughout the building. Um, it's just, it's just incredible. So thank you on behalf of yourself and all the other people that are behind this amazing achievement. Um, we really appreciate it and appreciate you and your work.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it, my team also appreciates it. And of course, like I said, you know, I'm working with amazing people that are all, also doing this work. Um, don't worry, you guys aren't the only ones that tease me in this building. But, you know, even with all of that, everybody works together to get it done. So, yes, thank you for recognizing that.
I think sometimes, you know, I, I, I also wrote down eighteen years of balanced budget. You know, and I, and I think we, we make it look easy, but I think it is important, as Pat said, to lift that up and all of the, the work that we do here at E T H S. And, you know, we're, you know, as I said earlier, we're not perfect, but we've had, we've had some pretty solid success, successes. And, um, and, but it doesn't come without, like, a lot of work from a lot of people. Putting the right team together, yeah, in every department, at every level. Making sure teams are working together because, as we said earlier, you know, we, we get these, these reports, but we're not working in silos here, we're all working on the same thing. We need to recognize those values and what they are so that we can all contribute to them in our own way. Um, and that's what, what makes it all work well. So it's not without some pretty doggone hard work. So, thank you. All right, well, thank you again.
I was just gonna add, you made me see, I was ready to go. But you made me think, cuz this is not easy. I'm sitting here thinking about, um, my, my day job. And, uh, this is not easy work that you do. But it, it's also, so, right, this is an example for the communication department. How do we tell the story? Cuz it is like a given or people complain about the taxes. And so the story is bigger to me than just you balancing a budget. It's, um, how well this district over years, and I don't know how long, but over, at least since I've been on the board, um, was fiscally responsible, right, with the dollars that we were given. So, and they had an excellent secession plan, right? So, and you can see wha- what happens when it's disrupted. You know, you, you, we, we know what happens when, um, there's no continuity in your finance department, right? Or understanding the values that we have and, and, and how we budget and, and what our core strengths are. So it's, it's the balanced budget, it's the, you know, being very tight and watching every dot and, and decimal and, and comma, but it's also. But it's also managing the the responsibility that you have to oversee what you have to oversee, right? And that that has been happening in our district for for several years. Um, and that's the, to me, that's the story. It's like, you're you're responsible for this, and you haven't skipped a beat in the middle of a pandemic. I know you didn't want to mention that, but, you know, I mean, everybody's blaming everything on the pandemic, and you haven't skipped a beat in the middle of a pandemic. That's amazing. That's amazing. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wish we could hire you. I'm like, I'm I'm confused over here.
You can hire her sister. You got a sister, Kendra? Maybe we'll we'll let Monique hire your sister.
Okay, strike all that from the back.
Others would like to hire you, but they can't.
Right. No, no. You go nowhere.
Um, I don't even know if I can follow that. Not, no, I can follow you, I mean, like, go after you. I can follow your thoughts. I don't know if I should. Um, okay, so one is, I just wonder if there's anything we need to worry about, right? Like, so, well, or, you know, as I try to read and understand and think about uh what we're seeing in our trends coming up, um, from hiring to, you know, I see us funding and um trying to manage to continue, like you said, through MTSS, our parap, all of the supports. Um, and while we are balanced, I'm thinking about, you know, what was the favorability? Like, where where were we in any of our, I know you run a bare bones and, but I know there's also these moments where there is a money that, I'm not going to really say it, I know you're going to be like, shoot me down, but like, extra. Like, you know, sometimes if we're over budget a little bit, there's a little bit of funding. But we need to think about next year, FTE and all these pieces. So I'm, my, and I'm, you know, I'm reading and I'm trying to understand everything. And I'm thinking, there's got to be a cautionary element also to what you're seeing. And so I'm just curious if you would want to share that.
Yeah, so I don't know that I want to use the same term, that there's something that we necessarily need to be worried about. But there are constraints, right, when when we're doing the budget. So um, the contracts that we have in place now, for example, those contracts were put in place years ago, where we had higher inflation, where everyone at the table would have been um negotiating from what was going on at the moment. And of course, you're also thinking about, okay, what are the scenarios for the future, and trying to plan for that to the best of your ability. But the fact of the matter is that we have some really good contracts in place that we're very proud, uh, we're very proud to bring to the board. But of course, now, when we're seeing inflation going down somewhat, it's still higher than what it used to be. But you may be matching a contract that was negotiated two, three years ago with the revenue that you have now, right? And so you still have to answer to that. And so um, and that's just one example. If you, if you want to talk about all the things that made me anxious during the budgeting process, it's going to take longer than these few moments. But, and and sometimes it does result in us having to have frank discussions about if we know that we need four of X, it might be two this year and two next year, right? Um, and so how do we meet the needs of our students? But then sometimes, does that look like maybe we have to ramp up rather than doing everything all at once? Um, so those are just, but that's, that's budgeting, right? And I'm not, I don't want to make it sound easy, because it's not, right? Especially when you're talking about all of the needs that our students have, you know? It 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 can weigh on the people who have the responsibility. Um, but you do the best you have with what you've got. Um, that's the name of the game, because I told a colleague of mine I would really love a money tree. But the fact of the matter is, you know, I don't have one. Well, actually, I do, but it's not, it's not real money. It's the plant. But, you know, but the fact of the matter is, we we have to deal with the reality, and no matter how much money we have, more than likely, the needs are going to outpace, right? So you just have to be responsive to the things that you can be in the moment, save some things for later. And that's also part of values-based budgeting, right? Sometimes you have to say, hey, we put money into this, we're not, maybe we're not seeing the fruits of that to the same degree that we may realize that by dedicating that money somewhere else. So sometimes you have to also make sure that you're looking at the data and evaluating those decisions, and maybe making different decisions. Doesn't mean that it was wrong at the time that it was done, but sometimes you have to pivot. And so tho- those are the things that come up in this budgeting process that we are constantly having to work through as a, as a team.
Hard work. Humbling. Well, thank you. Thank you again. Kendra.
Thank you, board.
All right. All right, action item. The first action item is approval for tentative budget fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Can I have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes, thank you. The second action is approval of resolution authorizing notice to remedy teacher as referenced in the exhibit.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. The next item is approval of press policy issue number one fourteen.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The next item is the consent agenda, which consists of approval of IASB membership, approval of minutes from April eighth, twenty twenty-four, both regular meeting and closed session, approval of bills, treasurer's report from March of twenty twenty-four, and personnel report.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, um, we're at old and new business. Is there old or new business that anyone would like to share? Couple lights on over there? Because we've been voting, yes. What time is it? Okay, uh, all right, no closing polling of the board. Okay, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Still moved.
Okay, thank you.
What do we do if Gretchen's not here?
We stay in open session. Okay, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, board.